Session for May twenty first, two thousand and twenty to order. Kirk, would you take attendance, please?
Actually, your city clerk is attends these meetings, so she's online to do a roll call.
Oh, she is, okay. Monica, oh, there you are, thank you.
Becken.
Here.
Johnson. 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 Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
Perklink.
Here.
Barry Johnson has joined us, I notice. Okay. So the first section here is public comments on agenda items. If you wish to make a comment, it's easier for me to recognize you by just unmuting yourself, speak up and wave your hand and you'll catch my eye. That little blue hand in the corner doesn't work for me as well. So if you wish to make a comment, please identify or ask to be identified and remember to hold your comments to three minutes on agenda items only. Anybody?
Hey, Ken, it's Elizabeth Estes, can you hear me okay?
I can, yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'm actually, I sent something to Kirk and I think he shared it with all of you last night. I'm actually representing Alec Paylightner from Grow. He and Lindsay are busy working and he wasn't able to be a part of this. He reached out to me last week and threw an idea by me and I wanted to bring it to the council's attention as you guys discussed the street closures tonight. His proposal is to potentially shut down the street Griffith, the half-street, the street between Grow and Toulouse. And it would have minimal impact. It could be an alfresca dining for any restaurant on that street, including scooters, including the Mexican restaurant, including Coast or Tree of Life or even New Holland Brewing or whatever happens, Wally, I'm sorry, Bodys. And people could use that street and we could make it something really neat to encourage people to take their food out and carry out and sit outside as opposed to what we're probably going to be handed with, which is fifty percent capacity in restaurants or six feet. There's, thank you Kirk, he brought it up. It's interesting because you only lose six parking spots. This also could be interesting from Phil's, you could grab your food, take it, come sit down. Really important thing is that Alec, when he talked to me about it, he said, I don't want people to think I'm doing this, obviously it helps me, but I'm not doing this for that. I'm doing this because I think we could make it something pretty amazing. That could really be less disruption than some of the other streets. So I wanted to bring it to your attention, to something to put on the plate as you're thinking about all the different options. The alley would remain open, so you could still come in and out of there if you needed to, and it would be a street that doesn't get a lot of traffic on that end of it anyway. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and have you see this. There was one more picture attached which showed the lot up over the top of the street, which makes it feel a little like the Europe alfresca dining kind of concept, which could be really cool. So that's all I have to say. I hope you'll consider it.
Mayor, may I ask if Elizabeth will fill us in on her governor's committee that she's been working on with restaurants reopening while we've got her?
Yeah, okay, you're not going to stay with us?
I wasn't planning on it, but I sure can, Mayor, but.
I guess I can, with the council's consent, deviate a little bit and let you report on that unless there are any objections. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I got an objection because I talked to Elizabeth about meeting with the whole city council and having it on the agenda for next Tuesday night and I mentioned.
Oh, okay, yeah, Chris, you did, you're right. We're just gonna give her the recommendations tomorrow, so we can wait and do it Tuesday night, that's totally fine. But they'll be, it'll be announced tomorrow, probably.
Okay. Anyway, thanks Elizabeth for bringing this to us. I thought it was a great, plan had great potential, so I'm sure we'll consider that.
Great.
Anyone else wish to make a comment?
I do, can I, can everyone, can anyone hear me?
Christine, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that much time because obviously I'm working, but just to go off on what Alec was proposing over at Grow, I think something needs to happen when it comes to outdoor seating, whether it's closing the streets, whether it's a pop-up patio where people, whether it's restaurants or retail, can have a couple of parking spots and they can have a designated area to, you know, try to make up for the lost seats inside. I think outdoor is going to be key going forward. I know the MLCC is really fast-tracking their outdoor license, which will be greatly help the city between the sheriffs and the business owners too. It was, it was pretty fucking rough this past weekend between all the people in town, all the open containers, all the selling to goes, it's just, it's become, it's a mess. So I really hope that we don't have fifty-two million meetings about these things, that we just pull up a Band-Aid and if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work, but at least we tried it. And there's gonna be, you know, negatives and positives to everything, but it's all about outdoors. People are not going to stop coming here. And I'm just worried about safety, I'm worried about business, and I just feel like the town needs to open up and we need to open up safely and we need to give people space to sit and drink and enjoy the water, enjoy the people, you know, obviously safely and all of that, but it's just, some, some things need to be decided and need to be done. So, and if I could just get a couple portageons down here, that would be great. I understand the bathroom's a shit show, so the poor guys were out there all day today trying their best to get the water pumped out, but if we just get a couple portageons down here, that will help too. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I have to go to take to the to-go orders, but I'm happy to answer any questions or be a part of a longer conversation on this. So I appreciate all your time and I think you all are doing a great job too. You guys are definitely, you know, forward-thinking and that just needs to continue, so that's all.
Thanks Christine.
Sorry for the.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, this is Lauren Flanagan.
Lauren Flanagan, go ahead, and David, I saw you raise your hand as well. Lauren?
Yes, so we've got a grassroots committee that was formed about several weeks ago. It's for the whole Sagatuck Douglas Fenville area and it's safety and sanitation procedures and protocols that we put together and we have subcommittees for restaurant, lodging, and retail. And we'll separately do galleries, we haven't really addressed them yet, but we actually have draft protocols that we've developed. In fact, they've gone to, the governor's seen them through Elizabeth's committee that she's on, through that group, and they're being distributed more widely through the state. We've had as many as, you know, hundred-some companies, businesses in the area have feedback. So we are getting close. Of course, we're waiting to hear what the state's gonna say and what we're gonna get from counties, but I can share, I don't have it with me here, but I can share with you later the links to the protocols that we've established. We also are going to have a badge that will go with a pledge, so the pledge will be Art Coast Safe about keeping our businesses safe. And it'll be something that can go on their website and in the window and posters, and it's a pledge that the businesses will support these protocols. The whole goal was to come up with sustainable safety and sanitation measures that meet CDC, that'll meet what the state want, but there's something doable by many of our smaller businesses. And so that'll be something we can market as Art Coast Safe to help keep, to the point that was just made, that people will feel safe to come here and be safe in our restaurants and retail stores and in lodging. So there's been a lot of work on this from a group of ten, plus a lot of feedback from a larger group of about a hundred that's been involved. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that it's in progress and in process, I should say, and good progress is being made. And of course, we'll work closely with whatever the state and county come up, but we're ahead of the curve. We're ahead of more than many other communities here in Michigan and even getting some recognition from that. So I thought you might want to know.
That's great, thank you. David Langley?
Okay, yeah, this is a minor thing, but it can be major in regards to that possibility of the closure of Griffiths down by Grow on the corner there, putting a dozen, ten tables or so. That's a really good idea. The only thing is that Griffiths Street tends to be a freeway for people at Hoffman and Griffiths at the top of the hill. They step on the gas up there, it's a stop sign up there, and then they come down the hill really fast. And so there would have to be some kind of, some kind of, I mean, a street department. I mean, they obviously have to get involved with this and put a lot of warnings in there about the road being closed and just not, just close it off. I mean, it has to be done at, at, at the street corner of Hoffman and Griffiths up there, so that people know that they can't just pour the gas on going down the hill because it's, it's very, it's, it's very unnerving to see people, how fast they come down the hill. But I guess you're gonna talk about that at city council, that's something to consider too, so just make sure that's, that's brought up as a, as a, as a definite need if this happens with the road closure up here. It's really a nice idea though, it's a really short, sort of like a stagnant area, it could be a nice, nice area with, with tables there and like, like everybody says, bring your, bring your lunch and meals from elsewhere and sit down right there on a nice day like this, so, right, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll move to our discussion items, the first of which is the flooding mitigation plan progress. Scott, are you gonna give us a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So I'll just, I'll just go site by site. We, we've got the four locations and I'll just go right down the list and give an update on each one of them. The biggest one being Water and Lucy Street, touch base on that. You know, what that site looked like a few weeks ago is not what it looks like now. There's quite a bit of water on there from the rains that we've experienced lately and, and I really was anticipating that the water level would have retreated a bit more than it has, so I've been kind of puzzled over the last couple of days on how we're gonna get a balloon plug in that drain. So part of my thinking was to consult Chief Greg Janik on this and try to get some ideas from him, whether it be we get a dive team member to go into that catch basin structure and install the plug so we can inflate it, but, so I, I met Greg down there today and the plug is in. We got it and it's in and it seems to be, seems to be rock solid in there, so thank you very much to the fire department for the, for the collaboration on that. You guys were a huge resource to us at the Public Works Department and I really appreciate it a lot, so. So the plug is in, our sandbag inventory for the area is growing as we get an hour, half hour here and there, the Public Works crew are filling sandbags and we have a decent supply, we'll obviously need more, but we are working on it as much as we possibly can and hopefully after Memorial Day we'll get a little more time to work on, on that project. So I've required plastic sheeting for the sandbag structures. And then on top of that, I talked to John Moxie today over at Fleas and Vanna Brink, they've received four bids on the excavation portion of it, of the work, they're waiting on a fifth, and John said that he's trying to get that fifth estimate this week and make a decision this week and get the ball rolling and get them, get them scheduled. So as far as the electrical work goes in that site, the design idea is complete, so John, Fleas and Vanna Brink is working with our contractor, which is High Point Electric, and so they'll be, they'll be doing the, they'll be getting that work done in the coming weeks. So moving on from there, kind of with the same site almost, but the Spear Street boat launch, I put an order in with HESCO barrier immediately after the council approved the flood mitigation plan. I have not gotten the confirmation that those HESCOs are on the way, so we may need to, it's okay, but it may just mean more work for Public Works in terms of putting up some temporary sandbag structures in those spots so we can keep the ball, keep the, the project moving forward. So I've sent a couple emails to HESCO and asking for an update, haven't gotten any. I'm expecting that they're, they just have a lot of demand for HESCO barriers right now, so, but we'll work around that. Wick's Park Restrooms, that work's done, we got the plug in there today and we started pumping with our trash pump and the river level is just a little bit too high to really have an effect where we pumped it down as much as we could. We're anxious to get back in the morning and see how, how much water is in that, or that catch basin structure, but that plug's installed and we should be able to keep up with it as long as the water level doesn't, if it goes down a little bit, we'll be able to manage it a lot more, so. That work's done, and then as far as the south end of Butler Street goes, I've acquired the, both of the puddle pumps for that area, trying to work with Stephen Phelps on the power supply down in that area. And again, we'll, we'll have to, Republic Works is just gonna have to build a sandbag structure or something or maybe use some alternative products to get that barrier built until we get those HESCOs in, in stock, so. That, that pretty much covers the plan for now, we're working on, this is at the top of our priority list, we, we have quite a few irons in the fire right now, but we're working as hard as we possibly can on getting these projects done. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions?
Ken?
Mark?
Yeah, question for Scott. So I can take from your comments that if we have continued delay from HESCO, we'll be looking at some alternative means, maybe sandbags are always a means, but like the water tubes, the tube barriers, is that something that you're contacting or discussing with John about?
Yeah, it's a good question, thanks for that, Mark, yeah. Actually, council member Leo sent me some, some product information on the same type of product. I'll, I'll work with John on that, we touched base a lot, a little bit today, but those seem readily available and somewhat inexpensive, so yes, to answer your question, yes, one way or the other, we'll get a barrier built.
And one more follow-up question, please, regarding Lucy and Water Corner there, now that that balloon plug is in, once the water just starts to recede a little bit so it doesn't cascade across the, from the west side, you can pump that out now, correct? Because that'll eliminate a lot of the, when I went down there, look, there's quite a bit of water runoff along the east gutter there from Spear Street around the corner going north. So you're in a position to pump that out, correct?
That's correct, as long as the water, it'd have to go down pretty significantly. The fire department and the Public Works, we were down there today with waders on and at the curb where it was well over a foot, maybe a foot and a half at that gutter on the east side of the road where we were working, the water would have to go down quite a bit, but if it does, we'll, we'll jump on it and get it pumped out.
Well, at least you're in a position to do something about it, so thanks a lot for, for everything you're doing on that.
You're very welcome, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor Truster, this is Garnet.
Garnet, go ahead.
Hey, hi Scott, so thanks so much, I know Mother Nature has not been cooperating, so that's, but I appreciate everything you all are doing. Are you good to go with what's been allocated so far or are you gonna, are you seeing things that you're gonna need that haven't been accounted for as far as supplies, anything?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for that question, I appreciate the thought. Right now, really, we just need time. You know, we've got a lot of demands this time of year with the employment situation. We just, we just need some time and, and to not get distracted. I'm still getting a lot of requests from business owners and residents and we're trying our absolute best to keep up with demand of everything. I've stopped giving dates on, on specific jobs and we're, as long as we can stay laser-focused on this flooding and get through Memorial Day weekend, I, I think for the time being we have about everything with the exception of those HESCOs, which I'm, I'm staying on it, but thank, thank you very much, I appreciate the courtesy.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll move along. The next item is the downtown business activity, street closures, pop-up patios and additional seating. Kirk, you wanna start this off?
Well, this was a, an item that the council has been discussing since last meeting and obviously there's a lot of interest in the community for that. We did receive a request from a couple individuals prior to the meeting regarding the pop-up type patios. One of them was a Wick's Park Bar and Grill and another was Wally's also requested to be able to use the parking spaces as shown in these photos of, these are not in Sagatuck by the way, but you use the parking spaces and the businesses could expand out further and have utilized that service for, for their business. Now, I did talk to the Allen County Health Department and reviewed this with them. They said that if a business were to do this, it would be totally fine with them, they would, they wouldn't have to pay anymore for inspections, but it does, they just have to get inspected a little bit differently so that they could utilize that for food service. The other issue, obviously, if you're expanding or if a business is expanding out in that area and wanted to have alcohol service out there, that's something that they would have to get approval through the Liquor Control Commission. It's not something the city can say you can have liquor sales out there and that overrides that component. So two components with this, if the city council decides to do something like this, we just have to make sure the property owners know that they still need to contact the Allen County Health Department for their food inspection license and if they want to do alcohol sales, they'd have to contact their representative at the Liquor Control Commission and get that worked out.
Okay. Any questions, comments in this topic? You're, hearing none?
No, I have me.
Chris, okay, wave your hand, Chris.
Jane, is this when we want to talk about the survey?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think so. We, the survey for the downtown businesses has been completed and there's a few of us working on a committee that was formed through Sagatuck Douglas together. We met yesterday and went over the survey and maybe Gregory could chime in, he's the one that did the survey, and maybe that would be good for him to do that first and then the rest of us can chime in later.
Sure, Gregory, would you like to do that?
Well, sure, as you know, I'm on furlough through Sadaba, so this was something Gregory did on his own time, but I did let our president know and some of our board members let him know that we were doing a survey to reach out to our downtown business owners. We sent the constant contact survey out on Friday and we had a hundred responses. We have, I'd like to ask the committee, Jane, if you have a chance to get a copy of this, if any of the other council members would like a copy of our results. And we just wanted to ask, it was a simple survey, it wasn't that complicated, we just wanted to ask merchants what they thought about the idea of closing down Butler Street, Water Street, parts of Butler Street, and then also the idea of one-way going down both streets. We submitted the survey and then we spent that weekend, Wednesday, or I mean, that, that Saturday and Sunday, visiting all of our merchants personally, from Mike Jones on one end of water to Christine to the other side over at Wick's Park, and then from John Jerome over at the Butler Pantry all the way up to the corner here. It was interesting to meet a lot of the new businesses that are opening right now and a lot of the newer businesses here, the local store were able to be a part of this survey. So it wasn't just a Sadaba member's survey, it was kind of focused on the downtown Sagatuck because that's what we're covering, that who would be affected by this. I understand the DVA in Douglas is also searching, like, closing up streets as well. So just wanted, real quick, the survey went out, we asked eleven questions and it's, real quick, did you know that over a hundred, about seventy-six businesses in downtown Sagatuck and on Water and Butler Street, thirty-three percent of them have been in business for over twenty years, twenty, thirty, forty years? And I thought that was surprising to see how, to see that as well. And then to, real quick, to let you know, out of the hundreds that were surveyed, sixty of them were a hundred percent, they want the streets closed either for all summer or on weekends throughout summer, and thirty percent did not want the streets closed. I was surprised by that number, I thought that were more for this, a great idea. And then ten percent were undecided. We asked them if, yes, how, how important was it to those that did vote yes and, and where would they like to see this happen? We had about, you'll see, that, I wish that we would have, would have shared this with you, but thirty-three out of a hundred of those surveyed preferred closing Butler Street to Mary Street, although there were even more that were undecided with no answer. A lot of folks had just didn't know how, but they knew we needed to do something. We had three write-in answers to suggest closing Culver Street from Griffith to Butler, we talked about that at one of our meetings as well. And thirty-six out of a hundred of them said that they want it all summer long, twenty-three out of a hundred said weekends and holidays. So the folks that didn't, that didn't want to see a street closure at all this summer, their main issues were decreased parking, extra work to bring business outside, I heard that from several merchants, from Good Goods, one of the new business articles, just having to have the extra labor to have a sidewalk sale every day would, would be complicated. And then also inconvenient for curbside pickups. I had conversations with Jim over at Dunn Valley and then also Mike over at Wine Cellars and also the Sagatuck Gallery, John as well, when folks are picking up big paintings, they're used to be able to park in front of their stores there and pick up and go. So there were forty-five comments that we shared, I shared everything about the survey and there were forty-five different write-in comments, and so it was interesting to read everybody's, where everybody was coming from, and we also included the list of sixty names of the businesses out of the hundred that did participate in the survey. We came up with a lot of conclusions, we were, we talked to, I know Jane had talked to the city of Traverse City to find out how it's going over there because I think they just tried their first Friday of road closures, and from what I've understood, it's only once a month is their closure idea and it's going to be the last Friday of the month and they're calling it last Friday something. And they're trying that out, so I know, we're talking to them, I know Greg Janik was gonna reach out to the fire department up there as well and just kind of give an idea of how things went. There was a list of things that we wanted to make sure that the city knew that these were things that had to happen in order for this to happen. One of them, which was mentioned in the survey a lot, was about the police officers and having at least a walking patrol police presence while, while the streets are closed because just to make sure that people aren't getting carried away with drinks and also because of how it looks, it just looks good. Remember Officer Bob, I think a lot of us remember him and, and having somebody in town like that. Then we also talked about, you know, of course, you're taking away parking, which was the concern of some of the folks that didn't think it was a good idea, and so we thought about, well, where are we gonna have parking at? Because also, you know, as you know, I serve on the Board of Transportation here, we had our meeting last night and it was reaffirmed that the CVB is no longer donating for the summer shuttle service. We have no money right now and nobody has donated for any kind of shuttle service from the inner urban, so that's going to be a concern as well, how we can raise money or how we can find those funds. The weekend summer shuttle from eleven to five on Saturday and Sunday all summer long, that price tag's about thirty-five hundred. To run it every day during the week to accommodate a longer closure, that would have to be another conversation. Another thing we talked about was signage, which would be really important to make this successful, to make sure that we have plenty of signage so that folks know where streets are closed off, so that folks know how far they can walk with their drink if they are drinking. And, and also the, we mentioned, you know, the barricades, we'd have to have, of course, barricades and, you know, we want to look, we want them to look really nice, even if we have to repaint them, I'd volunteer to do that, but we want, we would, we don't want it to look trashy looking. And, and we, in fact, there was an idea about maybe doing it as art projects and having local artists paint the barricades as a, as, you know, kind of like a community art project, lots of things, but, but there's a lot more that the city has to think about, including the, we talked about a fire lane and I want to make sure as sidewalk sale, a lot of the verbiage that I can tell the merchants about our sidewalk closure, I can just grab them when we do sidewalk sale, we're gonna need that twelve-foot clear in the middle of the street or on the, on one side of the street. And then the idea is that it would be much like sidewalk sale so that we can get emergency vehicles through the main street, the main street as well. So those are, those are some things that, you know, we talked about and, and we just thought that, you know, it, we thought the idea that we've got to try something. And, and I think that, I think it, I think that if, if we give this a try and we think about all the things that, you know, the list that I brought up, including, you know, looking at parking lots for dining, dining use, we, there's that Sergeant Marina, he owns that lot, that dog lot. We, there's that Sergeant Marina, he owns that lot, that dog lot behind my old building where Del Sol was. And, you know, maybe we could put picnic tables there, talk to him, you know, but, but we owe it to ourselves to at least try this and maybe give it a Friday and try a Friday, much like Traverse City is doing. And then our committee said that maybe after that Friday, we'll follow up that Monday with another poll to all of our merchants in the same area and to see what they think about, about how it went. So that was basically everything, I think, Jane. Christine, I don't know if Jen's here or Greg, if you guys could, anything that I left out or?
No, actually, I was the one who talked to Marty from the, the city manager from Traverse City, and they, they've actually been doing the last Friday during the, the regular season, they've always had their sidewalk sales. He said they're about two weeks away from a policy to close all the streets. They don't, they don't have it done yet. But he was, he was very positive, said it's great, you know, the, they're looking into it because their businesses have come to them to ask them that. In the survey, Gregory also asked, the survey also asked, can you feel people should give up, should have access to the parking spaces right in front of their building? And it was overwhelmingly yes. So, you know, I think we have these requests here for the Wallys and Wicks, and we are looking at having a Friday. And then the whole issue with the CVB not donating money, we, it would be something that the city would want to look into as a way of helping our businesses by maybe providing those funds. So how would we go about moving forward with this to kind of come to some action steps?
Yeah. Well, Gregory, will you, Gregory?
Well, again, our action list here would be, I think the three most important things are having a police presence, making sure we have an officer that's going to patrol, making sure we have shuttle service, are we going to provide that? Parking as well, parking and shuttle service, signage. I think those are the three most important things. Of course, we need barricades as well, but those are the things that we're going to need the most. I'm willing to help volunteer to set up and let the merchants know, just like sidewalk sale, how far they can come out so we can keep that middle lane free for Greg Janik and the fire department.
Well, I was thinking for starters to ask you whether you're going to put this together as a report with recommendations, particularly what you would like from the city or the business community would like us to do to support. I think that would be a good starting point, and I see a lot of good things that you point out in that survey. So we can use that as a plan to move forward.
Ken?
Yes.
So as the committee met yesterday, we discussed possibly close, and this was just a discussion, and we'll put it together in a recommendation later, closing the first three blocks of Butler Street, but leave the side streets open. So there's, I mean, it's almost impossible to close Water Street and Butler Street. That would just be a traffic nightmare. So if we left the side streets open, and the fire chief had a few things to say about closing Griffith Street, that, that's kind of problematic because of the Griffith Street Hill and also that's a, and Greg, you can weigh on this after I get done. That would, that's kind of problematic, but the committee came up with possibly using that area next to scooters, that there's a lawn there and then there's like five or six city parking places there, that possibly that might be a place to set up some kind of outdoor eating space. But we can also use the parks and we can use the basketball court and the tennis courts because that, those activities we can suggest move to the high school. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. We'd like to do a, get together with the merchants so they understand what we're doing and close those first three blocks and see merchants come up with, like, maybe a Friday. And then, like Gregory said, hold another meeting on Monday to see how that worked and what the problems were. And I went downtown last weekend and I could see, I could see some difficulties and I'm not, God knows, I'm not the, the COVID police, but I, I just looked around and saw what was working, what didn't look like it would work real well. And so I think this committee probably needs to come up with a recommendation. And Greg, Jana, why don't you chime in here about what the fire department can do about first responder calls and about fire calls downtown?
Greg, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jane. We're very supportive of whatever the community wants to do. I think closing down the streets is a great idea. It really, I can't be in the position of, I don't know what the business owners want to do because there's pros and cons either way. With regards to Griffith Street, something to consider is, the first concern would be the traffic that comes down, as Dave said, the traffic that comes down tends to ramp up. As a matter of fact, we were always worried about cars coming down there and driving into Coughlin Park when we had events there. Just keep it in mind, maybe there could be a lane in the center and take up the parking on both sides. That's like the, the proposition or proposal on Butler Street. So keep that in mind. And we also use Griffith Street, there are times we can't get through to Butler and Water Street intersections, we bypass on Griffith Street. I hate to see that closed, but if you decide that's what's best, then we'll come in another way. We'll have to come in down Mason and down that way. There are times we can't even get past Sagatuck Center of the Arts, the traffic is so backed up. I just would hate to see any street completely blocked off. Matter of fact, I don't know that we've done that in the 19 years I've been here. There's always been a 12-foot lane, whether it was in the center or along a curb, just for those what-if situations if we have to get in. I suggest you consider having fire presence there. There would be a small utility vehicle that's capable of, it's a licensed medical vehicle. It has firefighting capability and just an all-around utility vehicle for a presence downtown. Also, the crew assigned could be ambassadors, they could be security, they could be there to help. When we stand by at Venetian Weekend or 4th of July, we're the bathroom police, we're always telling people where to go. So we hope you're receptive to that because we would love to participate in that. I would personally assign people down there unless the council decided they did not want fire presence down there. So those are my comments. If there's any questions, Mr. Mayor, let me know what, what you want me to do.
Okay. Hang on. Any questions of the chief?
Yes, this is Garnet.
Garnet?
Hi, Chief, how you doing? Thank you so much. Hey, really quick, I mean, you know, it's, you know, given that we haven't closed off the streets in 19 years, I know we didn't have a pandemic in like 100, so this is a whole new thing for everybody.
Sure.
You know, and I appreciate that you and I have had conversations, that you are excited about this prospect of closing off the streets. You know, I guess my approach would be, and as you have suggested, coming down Maple, coming another way, since you're already experiencing backed-up traffic right there by the Center for the Arts, that perhaps this year, in the special case, that you would be just kind of coming a different route into town if needed. So that way, we could, you know, businesses could shut off some of those blocks. That, do you think that's a possibility, at least to try it and see how it works and use an alternative route?
I think it's a great idea, I'm for trying it. We've got to think out of the box now. And to me, what's paramount, we all know, we all stand for safety, goes without saying. The businesses have to come first here. We have to figure out what to do to get them back in the saddle again. And we can come a different way. I think, Garnet, if I can say, if you, if we want to close off the streets completely, consider this. Whatever's in the center of the street can be moved quickly. Does that make sense? If there's tables and chairs, restrict those to the parking areas if, if you guys decide to do that. But wherever we go down the center of the street, if we do have a fire, something we could drag out of the way right away or easily enough. Does that help at all?
Oh, yeah. I think you'll find that the business owners will, number one, be just absolutely ecstatic to be able to do this, and they will work with you to make this work. I, if Christine's still on the call from Wicks, I bet you she would be like 100%. If the gentleman from Wally, same thing. I'd be surprised if any one of them said, oh, no, that won't work. They'll do, I am sure they'll do whatever.
If we don't have planters, heavy things in the center, stuff we can just drag out of the way if we, if we have that event of a fire, that's all we need. The rest we can get by, we can improvise. It's heavy movable items, or heavy items we can't move so easily that present problems and it wouldn't be prudent to do that. But we can make this work together.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Wally?
I just had a couple comments to make. Thank you to the committee. I'm happy that we're talking to Traverse City. Does anybody know if South Haven is going to be doing this? I know they talked about it, shutting down streets.
It hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. Mike G. had a great suggestion at Wine Cellars. He suggested if we do close down streets to make it later in the day, afternoons and evenings, so that deliveries and errands could happen earlier in the day, which I thought was a great idea. And also, Wally Peterson was trying to speak during public comments, he wanted to speak on this, and he couldn't get recognized just because of Zoom, whatever. So he says, "On the subject of street closures, the merchants on Culver are never included, and I don't use the word never lightly. To be fair and equitable, consideration of retailers on the smaller streets, Culver, Mason, Hoffman should rotate into any street calendar. Since parking is such an issue, there are streets where existing spaces could be made smaller," and I know he's reached out to Scott about that, "and/or made into diagonal spaces. Case on point, Griffith Street running alongside the Mazwe toward the river." And he says, "Coughlin Park could also use more picnic tables and porta-potties at the end of town and be welcomed by all." And I also wanted to ask about the pop-up patios. I'm wondering if that's something that we could sort of fast-track and maybe have Cindy look at. I throw that to Kirk and the powers that be to see how we could maybe go about that because I think we can talk about the street closures because the committee is, you know, well on their way. Any thoughts?
I noticed Wally is on this meeting. You care to add anything?
There he is.
Is he able, you got him?
Yeah. Wally, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
We're, I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulties again. You're not, your sound is not coming through very well.
Can you hear me?
Oh, it's bad reception.
Pretty bad, yeah.
Actually, if you, there's a phone number of somebody, if you, you're...
I don't know what's wrong. Any Holly?
Well, I was better.
I'm actually holding the phone close, I'm actually on my, on my mobile, so maybe that's what it is. I'm just holding the phone closer to my mouth now.
Okay, we can hear you now.
But I must look enormous. Actually, no, Holly, when I was having my technical difficulties and I said, Holly, what do I do? She said, send me, send me your thoughts. So actually, she captured that. I do, you know, is a longtime 16-year tenant, well, ten, business owner, that we're never included as part of downtown. We are actually where the downtown area begins, and I understand the problems that you're all wrestling with. And I just, I just wanted to say, hey, don't forget about us at this little corner of town. And I do think that there are ways we could use the area around our building to accommodate more parking because I understand that that is so vital for everyone, as well as using Coughlin Park, which is a little more picnic tables and boy, oh, boy, a couple of porta-potties. I don't know if the SCA is going to be open this. Oh, they have the one in the parking lot, so, in any of that, that's what I wanted to...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hello? Okay. All right.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question? Sorry. This is Garnet.
Yes, go ahead.
Gregory, this for Gregory Muncie and Jane and Chris, I appreciate you all doing the survey. I know that Douglas, DDA, did a survey as well. Is there, because Sadaba serves both Sagatuck and Douglas, is there a way that you all can share each other's data with one another? Because I know that Sadaba really serves both communities.
Yeah, you know, I will reach out to Kim, Kim Newans, later today or tomorrow. I understood that they were working on a survey, did that go out today? I'm not sure.
No, they've reported on it at the meeting Monday evening, and Kim Newans resigned. I don't know who the gentleman is, but, you know, I'll check on the agenda to see who it was that reported that.
If you could share that, the new contact information, either me or any of the board, the Sadaba board, we would love to share our, what we found out and information with them. Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I, I agree with getting this on the fast track, especially the pop-up places, and maybe Cindy be able to come up with that so we can try to come to at least some agreement on the parking places, if people be able to use them. I would guess, I would, would we have to vote on that to allow them or can it be just something we can move forward?
Kirk, what's your thinking on that?
Well, since it's a street, I think the council's going to have to probably vote on it. And again, I haven't researched this yet. Cindy's on the line too here, so she might be able to chime in, but my first reaction is that it might take some sort of council action if, at a bare minimum, the council takes action and delegates that authority to the city staff.
Cindy, anything? Yeah? We didn't hear anything, so, there you go.
Yeah, I think it would be really straightforward to allow restaurants to use the parking spaces that are in front of their restaurant. It wouldn't, and, and still keep the street open, at least to one-way traffic, if not two-way. And it wouldn't take up all the parking spaces, just the ones that are in front of a restaurant. I hate to leave out merchants, merchandise, but that seems to be more complicated with bringing out tables of merchandise and racks. I'm not quite sure how that would work, but I would be happy to look at any of that. And I think each business is different. For example, Phil's is a lot different than the Butler. The Butler has a lot of onsite space they can use, but Phil's doesn't.
It's not going to, it's not going to work for everybody for sure, but if they start limiting, if the governor comes out with 50% capacity, then it's definitely a help to those restaurants to have a larger square footage.
Yes, I agree. I think that the pop-ups make a lot of sense. It's not a huge amount of space, but it's more than they would have without the pop-ups. I'm talking about just like a patio in the parking space, not in the street street.
Yeah, Scott, you're...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one thing I would like to ask council to consider when moving forward with these plans is how to accommodate the level of trash. Essentially, you're going to be, you know, by allowing the business to be conducted out in the streets, that, I don't know if it's possible to have the, the business owner also be responsible for their own trash receptacles in those areas because...
Definitely.
I don't know how, I don't know how we would have the staff to accommodate that. That's my, my biggest concern initially at this point.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a mess downtown already, and we don't even have that eye penetration of tourists coming in yet.
Can I, can I ask a question? This is Garnet again. Think, and this is for Kirk or Cindy, you guys might know, and then I have one for Scott. So are we, do we know where the Michigan Liquor Commission is right now as far as a blanket approval for sidewalks and private parking lots? I'd heard, I thought I'd heard that they were fast-tracking that, but I hadn't heard anything more recently. Any, any ideas?
I've heard, I've heard some rumblings of it, but I have not heard...
but I have not heard any definitive, um, direction of what's happening. But I have heard them, them talking about that. So I would imagine that's something, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen pretty quick because they want to get it for the summer.
Right, and I did talk to Tom Arnold from Wally's and he is applying to the Liquor Control Commission to be able to have service, alcohol service on the right of way between the sidewalk and the curb. So I think, um, any feedback I get from him, I will share.
Steven Phelps from Scotty.
Barry? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Barry? In my current job, I probably talk to five or six breweries every day and, and selling a product. And, uh, they've heard rumblings, but none of them heard anything definitive from Liquor Control.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
Steven Phelps said that he, uh, went to the Liquor Control Commission and they, they shot his approval through like immediately. Mass, anything's been done. So they're working on it pretty fast.
That's great. Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet again, sorry. This is a question for Scott. Scott, do we have any extra trash cans? You know, those big trash cans that are on the corners that could be put out or something similar? Just having more trash cans around?
We, we do have more. We just don't have more staff to, to empty them, but we do have.
Okay, so if, if we were to suggest that, hey, we'll put these out, but you know, as business owners, they're responsible for emptying them out, that would be a huge help to you guys?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I have one more question, Mr. Mayor, sorry. I know Elizabeth's still on the line. Elizabeth, do you know what the parameters are foot-wise and space-wise that's coming down?
I know that the, the Restaurant Task Force, um, is working with the MLCC to put together a blanket approval for restaurants. If the cities, municipalities allow you to be on the sidewalks, then there's going to be a blanket approval that you would be able to use the sidewalk and private parking lots for alcohol. Now, I don't know what that means though municipality-wise as it relates to, um, if the city's going to allow us to do that. It, it's up to the cities to decide what to do. But the MLCC will be putting out a blanket ruling, was what we've been told. They've been trying to expedite that. But to Chris's point, anybody who's applied right now, they're flying them through. But we might not have to apply because there may be, the way it's been written, it will be to the end of the year. We should know that tonight. I have my final meeting tonight for two hours and we should know where that's coming down. But that's the plan.
Okay, wait a minute, Elizabeth.
Jane?
So Elizabeth, what you're saying is people can use their private parking lots, but not city, street parking?
Well, there, so assume that you don't, let's pretend that municipalities aren't doing, aren't being as progressive as ours are, right? Ours are being progressive, saying, we want to give you the sidewalks. We want to help you with the streets. If there are municipalities that aren't doing that, but you have an adjacent parking lot. So let's say Douglas doesn't want to do it, but we have Isabel's and we want to open it up to the parking lot because it's on our property. Back in the day, we'd have to go to the Liquor Commission, request permission to be able to have a party in our parking lot. Supposedly, the way that it's supposedly going to come down, if you have a parking lot that's connected or you have sidewalks around or you have your outside property, you're going to be able to go ahead and serve alcohol. But, but it's also contingent on what municipalities do. So if you guys say, Elizabeth, at coast, you can use the sidewalk, but you can't have alcohol out here, you win. You trump that, right? Because it's not technically my property, but I can use it on my property lines. Even, that's what they're trying to do. We'll know tonight whether or not it's going to get pushed through.
So what you're saying is you can't use the streets for alcohol?
You can if you say so.
Oh, okay.
It's up to the municipalities, right? It's up to you guys. You guys, you guys give permission. If the Liquor Commission says you can have the, like right now on the sidewalks, they're going to say you can use whatever you own. If you guys say we can serve on the sidewalks, then we will probably, that blanket approval will probably go to the sidewalks. I don't know about the streets. I, I don't think that's been discussed. But I'm going to tell you, they're expediting it to try to help everybody and supposedly it's going to go till the end of the entire year. So I'll, I'll know more tonight.
Some kind of an answer on the streets, that would be.
Yeah, I think that's a municipal thing. Kirk would, I, I don't know. I mean, because you, you guys could say you can't have booze outside and even if the Liquor Commission tells me I can, I, I can't because I have to, I mean, I have to follow your rules, right? So I think that, I'll, I'll ask the question tonight in our workshop.
Yeah, it's city, anything on city property would likely, the, the Liquor Control Commission is going to say, as long as the municipality says it's okay, then the Liquor Control Commission says it's okay, so.
Yep, exactly, Kirk.
I think you're right on that.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Yes.
Mark here. I think having a thorough understanding of what is going to be allowed by the MLCC is maybe step one before we start allowing, you know, not allowing, but obviously the restaurants want to serve alcohol because that's a, a big profit center for them. And so maybe Cindy can do, uh, some research or that could be part of her, uh, her charge and I'm sure she's already thinking about it. My understanding from a reliable source is that the blanket approach for allowing selective areas for alcohol consumption is, uh, going, is, uh, a, a, uh, actually a bill that's being presented in the House of Representatives. It's not, so, to have certain zones in a city that can be approved for people to, uh, take alcohol and consume it. For instance, a zone could be Wix Park, okay? But I think that an area like, uh, Alec from Grohl suggested would be difficult to serve liquor in. However, he can serve liquor in front of his own property and maybe on the side along the sidewalk because he's a corner lot. But I, that's a, that's part of the process that I think has to be identified. The Butler had an easy, easy task because they just enclosed their own private property and extended the Butler deck out towards the river. That's what that fencing is about there, that rope fence. So I, you know, I think what Elizabeth's going to learn regarding that, that might be something she wants to, uh, get some further information on is, right now, we allow it. We allow the drinking, the alcohol to be served in the sidewalks. We just pay, you know, that's that new, uh, blanket permit process that, that Cindy, uh, handled. And however, I don't think you're going to be able to, unless some laws change, serve liquor outside your own boundary lines. So typically, typically you could go out into the street if we allow it, I believe, and, uh, serve liquor, but, but Wally's couldn't serve liquor, you know, 100 feet down the, down the street. That, that's my understanding, but I think that has to be clarified. I've got a lot of good, I gotta, got a lot of knowledge about liquor lab, liquor as it applies because it's, there's an insurance component required by the state of Michigan with liquor licenses. So those are just my comments. There are things that, you know, you don't want it to be a fly in the ointment, do all this work and all of a sudden, it's no good, you know, because you can't extend the liquor outside your own parameters. I like the idea, I like the idea of the, uh, the patios out in the parking lots in front of, you know, in front of the liquor establishments and the restaurants establishments, that it's, uh, it's conducive to what they can do. That way, we're not closing an entire street and we are still saving some parking. So I think it's worth at least looking at. One comment on Griffith Street. Griffith Street is really a bypass for the downtown area and we're asking for trouble if we close Butler Street and Griffith Street at the same time. Not only from a public safety standpoint or from, from just a traffic movement standpoint.
Right, agree. Chris?
Yes, uh, for clarification, the blanket approval that, that we gave, that does include alcohol, but only if the Liquor Commission approves it. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that blanket license that we gave does expire on June 30th, but that doesn't mean we can't extend it.
Okay, but they still have to go to the Liquor Commission to, in, in.
To serve, yes.
Right.
Yes, that's correct. There, I would like Elizabeth to email me or call me about what she finds out tonight so I can start putting together some ideas for specific places that it may work and may, we may want to tinker with, so.
Will do.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
You bet, Cindy.
All right. Any other comment on this, on this topic? So, uh, Gregory, we're going to wait a report from your committee on the recommendations. And, uh, I think this has been a really good discussion. We're, we're, we have a good list of ideas on the table and we'll move forward with that.
It was amazing how much, real quick, that I learned, uh, doing this. You know, you think you live here, you know everything. A lot of people had a lot of things to say. So it was, uh, great to share all that information.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, let's move along to the communications with city attorney, the city charter review. Kirk?
Yes, the city council, the city council members have asked, some, for some interpretations on the city charter with the, uh, contacting the city attorney. So I was asked to put this on the agenda. What I did was just basically reach out to the city attorney and, and ask him the questions. He did respond with a communication to city council that I included in your packet. Obviously, the city attorney is not on this particular meeting, but hopefully the, um, the communication that he sent was clear. What my suggestion would be is if, I think if council wants to really nail this down is to probably work on our, or rather your, um, rules of procedure. And obviously, the council can, as a whole, sets whatever rules you want in there. And, and update that and have something in place. If that's the direction that you want to go, that would be, I think, the, um, the easiest way to get some type of resolution.
Okay, anybody want to weigh in on this?
This is Chris. So basically, if, if I interpreted it the right way, this has to do with council members on their own going to the city attorney. And now we're interpreting it as, as specifically what? They can, but it has to go back to the full council. Is that correct?
Um, well, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure how to answer that.
I'm looking at the part, and I can't move that.
What, at the bottom?
Uh, yeah, section 6.8G notes that the city is to, 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 to. Put differently, "A request for an opinion other than through the city manager appears to envision that the request is being made for a formal opinion on behalf of the city." And, so, a general, right above that. General, "That is, as a general proposition, the council, rather than a particular member of that body, is recognized to have the authority to direct the city attorney's attention, actions." So does that mean that before, like I would go or anybody would go, the council has to agree in that?
That's, yeah, I mean, that, that's how most cities are operating. I did reach out to, um, all the different cities along the west side of the state here in our area. And in most cases, in all cases, actually, the requests are sent through this, through the city manager if there's questions and we get, city managers get answered. If the council wants to have something, a request or an opinion of sorts from the city attorney, it would probably be logical to have the city council direct the city attorney to do that. If you want to set up your rules where each council member can contact the city attorney and get an opinion without the other council members knowing about it, we're going to have to probably do some different budget options because it's going to get probably pretty expensive.
Why would you do that?
I'm not sugge, I'm not suggesting you do that. I, I just said, if that's the case, that's going to be a consideration. And also, I don't know of any other cities right now that I can find that are operating that way. Again, this is.
We've been talking a lot about how transparency and optics are supposed to be. And I think, uh, to put that so that a council member could go to the city attorney without letting either the city manager or the other council members know what for and why and how it answers. I, I think that kind of just knocks totally out of the ballpark for transparency. So I would hope that we would put something together so that, uh, we handle it like other cities do.
Well, I would like to comment. I think it would be helpful if the attorney were, uh, would weigh in because, um, it, it's difficult to ask these questions and speak authoritatively on them without legal counsel. I mean, I, I'm comfortable with, what the city charter says. The city charter says, "The city attorney shall act as," and this is 6.8B, which is, I think, what you were referencing, Chris. It says, "The city attorney shall act as legal advisor of, and be responsible to the council. He shall advise the city manager concerning legal problems affecting the city administration and any officer, singular, or department head of the city in matters relating to his official duties." And I would just say, like, if we look at this big picture, there have been city managers in the past, they'll be in the future. There's council members in the past that will be in the future. So I guess I would say, why would we try to interpret the city charter or enact a policy that gives sole access to the city attorney or to the city manager instead of the council? I mean, should a future city manager be derelict of duty? This type of policy would limit council's ability to get a legal opinion on the matter and council could be impeded and client attorney, a privilege could be negated. The city manager could also have full authority over how that information is used or disseminated and ultimately how it's handled. So I see that we might be setting up a precedent for any actions that might be taken now and in the future and could open us up to liability. And I just think this sets a horrible precedent. I think council's access to the attorney should be unfettered, unfiltered. It keeps checks and balances that are inherent in the wording of the current city charter. And, um, by giving a, by having a policy where the city manager has full authority over what is presented and received from the attorney, we're limiting the power of the council. And I don't know why any council member would want to limit the power of the council when the city government was set up to give the council full control of the city.
And I think that you're saying you're using the council there, but what I, and I don't mind it if the council knows. I'm saying that I don't think, in the interests of, of transparency, that one city council member can go to the city attorney and ask for something that is then kept from the other city, uh, council members or the, the city manager.
And, and let me, can I respond to that?
I'm sorry.
That's a great point. And it actually says in, um, the charter that says when we talk to the attorney, that that opinion should be filed with the clerk, a copy of that opinion. And just to your point, I think that's a great resource because once we reach out to the attorney regarding a board of review appointment, you know, then that information can stand and everybody has that information, including the chairman of the board of review or the planning commission or anybody. It's, it's accessible and Monica would have that. That's what the charter says.
Disagree, but now's not the time to get into it.
Well, you know, I'm trying to interpret what, uh, Slugger was saying in this, in, in this opinion. And, and there are some, um, different options that I can see. One of which is that the council does have unfettered access to the attorney, but it acts as a council. It doesn't act as individuals going to the attorney. So in other words, if, if we had an issue with our city manager, we wanted a legal opinion, the council itself would discuss that and authorize the mayor or whomever to move forward and contact the attorney. And the attorney would then report back to the entire council. And I think that's mainly our concern is that there'd be transparency with, uh, what the attorney is telling any one of us. I think all of us should be able to know that.
I agree. Um, I, I'm just curious today. I, I'm wondering like what the urgency of this issue is today because we got flooding, budget, we got a pandemic. And I mean, it hasn't really seemed to be an issue in the past. As we've seen by the number of times other council members have contacted the attorney on the recent invoices. So I wonder why now and why would anyone want to limit another council member's ability to represent their constituents?
I see, uh, two hands up, Cindy and Barry. Barry, I'll take you first.
The reason it's a, uh, a topic now is because council members have been going individually to the city attorney and soliciting opinions that we would not know about if it wasn't, uh, shared with the council. And so that's why as a council, as I interpret that, And so that's why as a council, as I interpret that, we all talk about it and we say, yep, let's get in a an attorney opinion. And we're all gonna be in the loop and we can make better decisions that way. So that's why we're talking about it while there's floods and pandemics. Because that's a big topic in our council right now.
Yeah, Cindy.
Yes, I do have some experience with this question from other municipalities that I did work with and now work with. Part of the problem is when individuals call and talk to the attorney, they might ask that a question that they think is the same question and get one answer. And then somebody else will ask another question that sounds like the same question, but it's worded a little bit differently and they give a different answer. We had that trouble in the township not too long ago. And the decision was made that if anybody is going to call the city attorney besides the manager, there has to be at least two people in on the call to make sure that there's no misunderstanding or interpreting what he had to say or she. And it did help a lot until we've got the township manager in place.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet. Yeah, so when I was on the Board of Trustees appointed by the governor, Governor Granholm, way back in 2009, I served on the board for eight years. Our attorney was a contracted attorney, would be at every board meeting, and that was quarterly. And so in in this whole transparency and openness and communication and making sure that everyone's involved and is aware of what's being communicated, the way in which we helped that process along, rather than having individual board members contact the attorney was that the attorney was present on a quarterly basis and would give an update to the council, to the board, to ensure that everybody was up to speed on every piece of litigation that was going on and could answer questions. That really helped. It was, you know, and sometimes we talked, you know, it was 15 minutes and sometimes it was an hour because there could have been at that time like a tenure dispute or anything like that. And I think to help us along in that regard, it would be, I think it would be great to have Mr. Slugger at a meeting on a quarterly basis, just to give us an update of what's what's shaken. So we all know. So we all know. And so there's no issues about who's talking and who's not talking. He's talking, he's filling us in. It's good. It's all on the up and up.
I think that could be a useful solution or partially useful step forward anyway, and probably a solution.
Mr. Mayor, can I, Mr. Mayor, can I have the floor for a second?
Yes, please.
And actually, this budget that I put together has anticipated doing some major improvements to City Hall for technological reasons. And one of the issues we that I'd like to implement if the budget's approved next month is to really upgrade City Hall so that we can livestream meetings, so that we can have the proper equipment, so that our city engineers and city attorney will be able to be present at these meetings. However, they won't have to drive an hour and a half to get to the meeting. So
Perfect.
And I know that Jeff Slugger, who is our attorney, does does attend some meetings for some of his clients in person closer to where he lives. But anyway, the point I wanted to make was I've envisioned for that and I put that into our our forward thinking budget. And if I get to go ahead on that, we could actually do a lot of things where we can get more participation with not only the professionals that you need, but the citizens and just wanted to make make you aware of that.
Okay, well, I I think that is an excellent idea. Both Garnet and Kirk. So as we move forward, I I think it's a sense of council is that we I'm not sure we need to adopt anything differently in our rules of procedure. I mean, in the past, we've been just operating under an understanding that we're that we channel our communications to the city attorney through the the city manager. And I mean, unless we we can continue that as an understanding or we can move forward and amend our rules of order. What's your what's your pleasure?
This is Chris.
Chris.
In terms of if I'm hearing what you're saying is that we are in agreement that if you have a legal issue, you go through the city manager. A city council person can contact the attorney.
Uh, no, no, I I.
I'm a little vague on where you're going with that. Can they still?
I was going with that is that the understanding has been in the past that all of our contacts go through the city manager unless it's an issue related to the legal questions related to the city manager's performance or something like that, in which case the council would agree to approach the city attorney with an authorized some committee or some person on the council to do that.
I agree with that 100%.
Very.
You know, I would just put the caveat that, you know, the council's the beginning point. So it's the council directs the city manager to contact the attorney. But it's really the council discussing it and having a consensus that that's where we want to put our time and our money.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, unless Kirk has a, you know, comes to us and says, hey, I've got an issue here that we need legal clarification about. That way, I think he can initiate.
Well, yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. But as far as, you know, all of us, I don't like the two person rule. I think it's gotta be a majority rule. If you're gonna wreck the about it at a workshop or at a meeting and majority says we would like an opinion from the attorney on that.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And a good a good person can put their argument in a concise and manner that will put us all on their side.
This is Garnet. Just to reiterate that it would be nice and proactive to just have Mr. Slugger join us like Kirk is suggesting through electronic means on a regular basis to update us on anything and everything.
It's our general agreement on that. I think everybody's.
Great idea, Garnet.
All right. Yes, Mark.
Kirk mentioned talking with other communities in our area. And whenever I say something to Kirk, he's usually a step ahead of me. But in regarding establishing some type of procedure in the council procedures or why not? Can we can you is it possible to get a couple of samples of that from other communities? So we've done that before regarding how those communities and council members interact with their city attorney.
Yes, it's actually, I did find a couple, but they weren't in Michigan. So most of the policies they have in place are just sort of an unwritten, this is the way they do things. But I did I did find a couple that weren't in Michigan. But the ones I did talk to, and I talked to all the lakes or all the the cities in Allen County, and they didn't have a a written policy per se of a this is the procedure it's gonna they're gonna follow. It's just the city manager obviously contacts the city attorney on administrative legal issues because the city manager is the chief administrative officer of the city and and runs the city. So therefore, he has to be able to talk to the city attorney on daily operational issues if needed. And the city council as a whole, if they requested some type of legal advice or had a question, it would usually be brought up at a some type of meeting, workshop, regular council meeting. And if the city attorney is present at that meeting, obviously, he or she can give council a update at that time, or the council would direct the city manager to contact the city attorney and get a legal opinion on, for example, closing streets down or whatever, whatever the council may want. So it's it's not real difficult and most cities have been operating this way. And that's how we have been operating. Anytime the city council wants to get some information from the city attorney, we've had had him come down for various meetings or at a workshop or regular meeting, you basically, the council just agrees and says, hey, contact the city attorney and get an opinion on whatever the issues you want. And it gets delivered to you. And again, when when you say attorney opinion, there's a little bit difference between just the attorney giving you some advice versus a full blown written up legal opinion. There's there's a couple that's a little bit different, a different situation there. So.
I would just I just have one comment. I would just show this is the city organizational chart that's in our budget today. And I would just say that I guess I don't understand how limiting councils' access to the city attorney helps the constituents who elected them to give them access to the city attorney on their behalf. It seems counterproductive to limit your own power and to give it to a city manager who was appointed to office, not voted by the electric by the electorate. And I'm really concerned about the time and money that we have spent on this topic because I think it's very clear in the charter. And I think our organizational chart is clear. And I think Cindy's suggestion that there are two people be on the call is a great idea. And we also have a way to record opinions with the clerk in the charter.
And Holly, I don't think anybody's trying to limit councils' access to the to the attorney, the city attorney. I think what we're trying to say is how do you appropriately channel that access so that it's it's effective and cost effective? And most of the access should go through our city manager. But if the council wishes to access the attorney directly, the council has the ability and authority to do that. We're we just want to act as a council, not as seven individuals following the attorney and asking different questions. So are we in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
What are what are we agreeing about?
Well.
Well, you can't really agree on anything here. I mean, it is what it is. If you want further information, I think the, you know, I'm happy to get Jeff down here and be on part of a meeting. But hopefully, if we can just get our City Hall up to the modern day specs, we we won't have to worry about this. It's we can have the attorney attend the meetings. And I can tell you, the more that the council functions as seven members, the better everyone's going to work and the better the city is going to operate. It's just, think of it as your one unit. And doesn't mean you have to agree or all the time, but have a meeting and decide what you want to do. And if you want to talk to the attorney, let me know. I'll reach out to him. If you don't want me, if you want to do it without me there, you can do that as well. But do it as a group.
I think that's exactly where we want to get. And we've done it in the past as sort of a an informal agreement amongst ourselves. But if we need to rewrite the rules of order to codify that, I'm I'm supportive of doing that.
Time to move on.
Okay, are we in agreement? Are we we need to take this up again with the attorney?
I agree with what you said.
I think we're not agreeing on anything. We're gonna do business as usual. And if we want to change it, then we will do that with them.
Okay. Then let's move to the 2021 budget recommendation. Kirk, you want to start off or Peter?
Sure, yeah, I'll be happy to. Peter's online too. And the I transmitted this to city council electronically a couple of days ago so that you would have it. And again, I know this, we're already into an hour and a half here. I didn't anticipate or expect, rather, that we were gonna get into the real meat of this thing, but I wanted to make sure that I got this document to you and also got it out into the public's hands. I can go through it as detailed as you want, or I can just skim it. It's really up to what what you would like me to do.
Well, in the past, I think we've done a walk a walkthrough, kind of a quick walkthrough, but a walkthrough of all the you know, all the items in the budget. Does anyone on the council have a different thought of anything else you'd like to do? I mean, I do recognize time is passing, but I think this is very important that we get we get this in our heads and we'll be moving along and asked to approve this by June 30th, right?
All right, I'll I'll just go through and just kind of touch on a few things. Then we get into the line item, I'll have Peter give some input there as well. So I put together a pretty thorough narrative for the council. And also, I didn't do this just for the council. I really did it for the public so that the the average citizen could read this budget and actually have it be a document that's worthwhile. A lot of times, if you if you research budgets and look at them like I do, and I have a pretty boring life, I guess, but you'll notice that sometimes you'll get a 900 page budget. There's a ton of stuff in there that doesn't really. I think sometimes maybe cities try to make the budget as large as they can because it looks like it's big and it's better. But we tried to really focus on some specific things that people in the community are really interested in. So when I went through and put this together, I developed in the spending policy, I kind of use some basic principles and and goals. And those were, number one, fiscal responsibility, maintain and improve the public infrastructure and the facilities, friendly, honest, transparent government. Position Sagatuck is a recreational and cultural center that attracts visitors. And also that the city's employees are the most value valued asset. With those principles is that's what I kind of base. Anything that was recommended for spending, did it meet or justify those those goals or those categories? If it did, then I felt comfortable putting in the budget and recommending it. This year is as well as any other city in the in Michigan and the United States, for that matter, COVID-19 has really changed things. I think the way that local governments operate in in the future, it's really, I think it's gonna change forever. I think our social distancing, personnel working remotely, public meetings, the way they are conducted, it's gonna change. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's short term. I think it's long term. Not COVID-19, hopefully, but the the way we operate. The optimistic side of this obviously is I think that we found that we can be more productive like this. We obviously have way more public participation in our public meetings. Right now, we had 25 total members. And I don't know if you've ever had 25 total people more than three or four times since I've been the city manager at City Hall. There's negative consequences of this, obviously, loss of life and tourism and revenue reductions. The budget was calculated, our revenues were calculated based on some of these things with COVID-19. So we put that in place. And then I went through and kind of just did a fund structure so the average citizen would kind of understand how our budget sort of set up. We have, you know, different funds and then we have our different departments. That's just kind of informational for the for the average general person. Our total revenues in all funds is listed here, 3.8 million roughly for all seven funds. 2.5 is really the 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 main one. That's the general fund. That's where most of the items that operate the city come out of. So I did a little chart there just so people could kind of see that. Millage rates, I think this is important because a lot of people don't understand millage rates or confused by millage rates. And these are all the millage rates that are levied if you are a city of Sagatuck taxpayer. This is the summer and winter. Now, again, these are the 2019 because we don't have the 2020s yet, so we always have to use the previous years. You can see the first three, those are the the millage rates that the city of Sagatuck Council levies. You have your city operating millage. And then you have your city of Sagatuck roads. That's a millage that was voted by the public that went to a vote. And the public said, we want to fix the roads and authorized up to two mills to do that. That and it expires in 2031. The Sagatuck road bond debt millage expires in 2028. And that millage, you really don't have a lot of control over that. It that's a a millage that you have to to levy to pay the principal and interest, whatever that is. And that's based on the the taxable value. So you don't have a lot of a leeway in there, if any. I threw a little graphic in here just so people could kind of get an idea when they a lot of people, they come in and pay the tax bill in City Hall and they think that the city takes that entire money and they use it for city purposes. And that's not the case. About 25% of a dollar goes to the city of Sagatuck for properties that have a principal residence exemption in place. That's about 77% of the properties in the city. 37% of that goes to the city for properties that do have a principal resident exemption. And that is roughly about 23% of the properties. So that's just a graphic, just to kind of get kind of more of an educational piece. The operating millage history, we've been keeping track of this for a long time here. And I got over 18 years. You can see the city operating millage has steadily gone down. Right now, we are at the max allowable that the city can levy is 11.3938 mills. And that's due to the headly reductions. You can see on this this chart at the bottom of the page, this is what this budget was based on. And this is what my recommendation is for the millage rate for the council to levy is your operating millage is at would be at 11.3938, which that's down slightly from the previous year. Same thing for the voter roads is down a little bit to 1.745. Your voted bond debt, obviously, you don't really have much say in that. We need to levy that to pay the bond. So total would be 14.6683 versus last year. So total would be 14.6683 versus last year's, which was 14.7673. A, a nice chart for the ranking. This is for the operating millage. And in 2019, rate Sagatuck is essentially the, the second to lowest. South Haven's in there because part of the city, a very small parts in Allegan County, but these are all Allegan County cities. So one could argue and say, well Sagatuck really is the lowest millage because there's only a small part of South Haven that's in there. But I think that's good just for educational purposes. We hear a lot that people say the taxes are high in Sagatuck and, and it's, it's not the tax rate that's high, it's the property values right now. They, they're high and that actually correlates to how much you pay. So the other thing that's really important, and those of you who know me, is I'm really big on infrastructure. I think some of the events that we saw just recently here on the east side of the state really kind of played into this thing where cities really have to be, be aware of all their infrastructure, even around in their community. The city has a, maintains a AAA standard credit rating, which is the highest that a city our size can get. That means we have a really good credit rating and that's identified in our audit. Our long-term debt is pretty good, we only have 2.7 million. And that will be, that's, that's the extra voter road village. This debt will expire in 2028. The city recently completed an in-depth capital improvement plan, which identified a number of critical infrastructure projects. And I thought this was kind of worth noting is just all the amount of infrastructure that the city is really responsible for. So I listed it all out here for you, you got 330 acres of parks, you got 11.5 miles of roads, you can see all the, all the components of your water utilities, your sanitary sewer, your storm sewer. The city council has about over a billion dollars of, of critical infrastructure that you are responsible for. So to put that in relation, that's about 400 general fund budgets. This is everything that you are responsible for taking care of. This is really the primary purpose of why we are here is to take care of this infrastructure. And the city council has done a very good job over the years because we've had capital improvement plans and we've chipped away and, and done a lot of good projects. When I talk to the city engineers, they tell us that there's not a lot of cities in our position that can say that they've been able to keep up on the roads and continue to keep and do future projects. So in that capital improvement plan, we have road and utility, utility projects at 4.3 million and park projects at 4 million. So we've got about a total of 8.4 million projects that are, that are out there to do. The city council still needs to go through and prioritize those projects and I have that still scheduled in sometime yet this year. We had a little bit of a difficulty, we were planning on going in in April and then the COVID-19 pandemic happened and that really kind of put us back a little bit. To kind of give a snapshot to the city of how much money you do have sort of, I guess in the bank, these are all the funds that are, that are listed here that we have and you have 6.24 million. Again, keep in mind, you still have 8.4 million in projects that you have to do. So if you think that we're cash rich, that's not necessarily the case, unless you decided you're never going to fix or take care of your roads ever again. So with that said, what I did is I, I made some recommendations in terms of what I thought the priority project expenditures were. First and foremost, what we did when putting this budget together is we took and said, the city's going to operate the exact same way that everyone has expected to operate. That means we're not going to cut any services, we're not going to cut brush and leaf pickup or anything like that. So any, everything that people are used to, we're still going to provide that service. That narrows down what we have to spend significantly. So first off, we have a balanced budget, which is required. We have a recommended capital improvement project on Park Street, that's the resurfacing. Again, that was, was planned to take place this fiscal year, but we're moving it into the fall because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We have a small kind of $2,000 Mill Street asphalt millings project. That's, I put that in there because that's, that's contingent on the Park Street resurfacing. We're going to use some of those millings to use on, on Mill Street. We have a, a large capital improvement project, about $350,000, which is Cantwell Road. The reason this is on there is number one, the road's in very, very serious condition. We've had some people fly off of motorcycles, I think, and, and over the last summer, the water infrastructure needs to be replaced. But the best part about this is it's a shared road. This is an expensive, expensive project, probably, you know, $700,000 to $800,000. But the city of Douglas and the city of Sagatuck share in this construction. I've talked to Rich La Bombard, who's the city manager over in Douglas, he has this as a priority project as well. I'm hoping that council looks at this seriously because we're basically getting a road for half price, the way I look at it. And it's also a road that really needs to be fixed. We have a capital project of $180,000 for Wicks Park outdoor performance structure. Again, again, keep in mind, the city council adopted a, an agreement with the state of David Bowles and Jim Selman to complete this project. So we are sort of obligated to do that. And I have police and Vanderbrink, a proposal with them to work on helping council through this process in the community. We have a capital project of $50,000. The Mount Bald Head radar building needs to be removed, it's dangerous, it's a safety issue. People are climbing up on top of the roof to jump over into the fenced area to get up on the tower. The roof is in very serious condition and someone's going to get hurt. This I think is, is we need to really take care of this before somebody gets hurt or seriously, seriously injured. It's also contaminated, so that causes some issues. We have a $30,000 capital project for the Mount Bald Head stairs repair. Some of, we replaced these stairs with a grant in 2009, I believe, and some of the stringers are already failing, and so we're going to have to remove sections and get those replaced. The DPW was able to go and, and get those repaired and get us through this season, but it's something that we, we're not going to be able to turn our backs on, we have to get this done. The, we have $100,000 for facilities, and again, this is city hall building renovations. This, the exterior of city halls in serious need of repair. Not so much the exterior, which it is bad, the siding is old, it will no longer whole paint, but it's the interior behind that which is scary. We got some structural issues that we think we have in there and it costs us, when we painted, it costs us around 40,000, I believe, to get this building painted and it lasts about two or three years. So we really got to get serious about this if we're going to keep this building, which I have no, no reason to believe we're not. I don't think the city's going to sell it, it's going to disappear. And I don't envision city hall is going to move at any time, at least in my lifetime. So we need to really take care of this building to get it done. We're estimating $100,000, we hope that that's all it needs, but when we start taking that siding off, we may find there's more there than we expected. I have $20,000 budgeted for, this is what I talked about earlier, about city hall technology and council chamber meeting upgrades. We need to move into the, into the future here and this COVID-19 experience has been a real eye-opener. Governments have been operating like we are right now. We need to improve our facilities so we have better technology where we can have our city attorney, our city engineers be present at the meeting virtually, as well as if the state legislature and the state government allows us to continue and do these meetings like this, we may be operating or have the ability to operate like this in the future. So it's really important we get things set up in place. Also, the council chamber desk that we have right now up there is just large and bulky. I know there's a lot of people like it, but it's inefficient, it doesn't work. We have a small city hall and we need to maximize every inch of that building. We need to get a modular type desk system that's easily and quickly reconformed for different activities. You know, the social distancing's not going to disappear. So if we're required to go back into those meetings, I think people are going to be a little bit uncomfortable. So we need to have, we need to have some ability to kind of reconfigure. Also, it's, can be very difficult for elections trying to reconfigure these large tables. If we had something that was more modular, it'd make it easier for the city clerk to conduct her business as well. I also want with a modular system, we can have, set up some pop-up workstations. This is going to be important because we're seeing right now that you, the, the old days of you have to be sitting at a desk to do your work, and it's not for everybody. Some people are going to have to do that depending on what, if your customer service, but you can get work done and you can do it in different locations. We have a, a facilities request here for $12,000. Our city hall computer server has to be replaced. This really isn't really a negotiable item. If we don't have a city hall server, we can't function. So it's reached its end of its life and we have to get it replaced. I have a personnel request in here as well. I'd like the council to consider adding a position that is titled Assistant to the City Manager, maybe slash Administrative Support Position. I'm in desperate need of someone in this capacity in order to get these projects done. I, I'm not going to be able to do this work with, with an office of one, it just isn't going to happen. I get probably over 100 emails a day minimum. Things have changed from the way they were 10 years ago, they definitely have changed the way they were 20 years ago. It, it's something that is needed to happen. If we don't do this, it's not that the city's not going to operate, but we're going to have to definitely reconsider the aggressive nature of, of completing projects and serving the public. That's just the, the hard fact of life. I have a personnel increase, a person, or a cost of living increase of 2% on this, in the budget. The city treasurer, Peter, he can comment on this after I'm finished here, but he pulled a, has a spreadsheet of, of many other local units and what we tried to do is find out what are other local units of government doing? What we found is that between 2 and 3% cost of living is what all these other units of government are budgeting for. So again, what we want to try to do here is the employees that we have, we have a very small staff, we have a great staff, they're, they're highly proficient in their job and we want to make sure that we, we keep them. We also want to make sure that we're fair with the taxpayers as well. The one thing is we are a non-union shop, I want to keep it that way. If we do, if other units of government in our area happen to give their employees a, modest increase for cost of living and we don't, and they decide that maybe those units of government are unionized and that would better suit them, this expenditure is probably, we calculated about a $10,000 expenditure if you implement a 2% cost of living. If we become a union shop and we have union negotiations, that's probably going to be a 20 or $30,000 expenditure for labor negotiations. Elections, we have a $12,500 expenditure. This is something our city clerk has been going to a lot of trainings recently and there's a lot of unknowns about what's going to happen, about how to do elections and how to do them safely. So we put a budget in there so that she will be able to conduct her job appropriately and safely. Motor pool, we have a $60,000 expenditure for a new sheriff's patrol vehicle. As you recall, we received a grant for three new vehicles when we first made the switch, but we have four deputies. We were using the older vehicle that we had in place from Douglas, that was a 2015 and we knew that that only had a couple of years life in it. So it's, we have to get a new sheriff's vehicle. Motor pool fund, we have another expenditure, $40,000. This is a DPW pickup truck that replaces the 2014 one. Again, we, we go through this process and utilize the vehicles until they need to be replaced. So it's not anything new to the fleet, it's just replacing existing so we can continue to provide the great park services. $3,000 I have in the training for the council. Now I just threw this in there just because this was something that we were going to do before the, the pandemic hit. And I, we still need to do this and I'm hoping that sometime later this summer, maybe early fall, when we were able to get back together and do it in a room where we can kind of social distance. But I think it's really important we get the council together and look at these long-term capital improvement plans to figure out what we're going to do in the next five years or six years. And we already have a contract in place with the facilitator and I want to continue to do that. So with that said, you know, again, this is a pretty, pretty complete package for you. These are my recommendations. This is what, and this, again, it's not just what I think, this is in the conversations I hear from council over the years and different members. So I personally think this is a good direction to move the city forward. We get stuff done, we keep employees here. I, I just don't see any negatives about this budget. The millage rate's lower than it was last year. But again, this is really my recommendation and at that point, the council really has to decide what's best for, for the city of Sagatuck. I'm going to let Peter jump in here and if you have any specific questions about any of the funds, we can go into the, into the actual line item component if you want, but I'll let you kind of talk with Peter and you can ask him anything if you'd like.
Yeah, Ken's muted.
Yeah, Karen, you're muted.
Okay, thank you very much. I was suggesting that we not go into the specific line items in detail, but rather have Peter make a couple of comments to add to whatever Kirk said and then just ask questions and answers. Pete?
Um, basically, the only thing I have to say, it's a balanced budget. We've got the cash flow to take care of this budget. I don't know if anybody has any particular questions that Kurt didn't cover, but I think it's a fairly upfront budget that we pulled for 2021.
Okay, yeah, any questions, open up. Chris, Chris then Barry.
Just a quick one. The priority list that we have, Kirk, you've got your priority list, will there be anything left over for the other priority list?
Kirk?
You're muted.
Do that, okay, here we go. The, well, in terms, I mean, the priority list, I guess is...
The wish.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I don't know if I have it, the, the wish list that we've had over the years is pretty, has been, we've knocked off a lot of those things. I don't really, I don't really, a lot of the wish list stuff really isn't like a major budget expenditure, it's, it's more time-related stuff. So I think we've got two things going on here. We have capital type improvements items and then you have things that may not take a lot of money, but it's going to take a lot of staff time. And so we got two things, when we get into this long-term planning session, I think we need to look at the capital side of things and also the non-capital side of things. So maybe policy-related type things like ordinance changes or how you operate. If we take those approaches...
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking more along what, what we were looking at doing with Mount Bald Head and the parking area there.
Yeah, well, yeah, that would, that would definitely be a long-term project. And I don't have that in there, that was about a $500,000 project because we needed to really roll up our sleeves and figure out, do you want, number one, want to spend half a million dollars on just that park? And if you do, do we want to try to apply for another grant and pay for it? Or do we want to scale the project back and do something a little different? I think it was a good thing we didn't get that grant because we really need to address the issues on top of Mount Bald Head, which is the building as well as the upper deck. You know, and if you've, if any of you have been up to the upper deck, it's, it's in, it's in really bad shape. So, so if we can get the upper level taken care of, then we might want to focus on the lower level, just because if you build a nice lower level, you're going to tear things up when you're fixing the upper level.
Thank you.
Barry? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Peter, I believed in the previous discussion, you had reduced the anticipated revenues at Oval Beach due to the virus and things. So I believe you've done adjustments for that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep, thank you. And I forgot my other question. Oh, the other thing that was on my mind is we have this study about wages and compensation for our staff. And again, that got put on hold because of everything that's happened, but I'm anticipating when we get a chance to get into that discussion, if we need to budget more money to, to change the compensation, we could do that with a budget amendment.
Correct, correct. And but the NML rep is scheduled to attend your Tuesday meeting to go over that report with you.
Sweet. All right.
I hate to say I'm one step, step ahead of you, but I'm one step ahead of you.
Hey, if you're not ahead of me, dude.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet.
Yes, Garnet.
So I, I shared a note with Kirk and Peter earlier today and thanked them for their work on this. This is, the educator in me absolutely loved this budget proposal because the, it's just, it's wonderful and I really, and I thank them for their time. It's, I, I really think it's what a lot of folks are looking for in our community who have been asking me, hey, can I get some time with Peter? This is perfect. And when we get it approved, I'd love to be able to share it with everybody because I think it really is very succinct. I did have a suggestion just in the, you know, in the interest of time, you know, we're obviously not going to be able to get the individual here to do kind of our, if you will, strategic planning, but I think we've all enjoyed and got a lot out of what Marcia did, Marcia Casper did with the, you know, prioritizing the projects down along Water and Butler. That approach might be, and I'd humbly suggest, might be a way for us to go as a council to get a clear idea of where we all stand in the prioritization of all these, all these projects. I think it would be really helpful. And then lastly, well, two more things, you know, regarding a position description, I would assume for an assistant that we'd probably... that we'd probably have to approve a full-blown position description. And then lastly, as far as technology, to recognize through the work that's been happening with the Sagatuck Douglas Together Group, that upgrading our capacity to 5G so that everyone has faster access all over town, whether they're a business owner or a resident, would be huge. And if we can begin to facilitate that process, that would be fantastic for everybody in town. So I appreciate you including that in there. So I'll shut up with that, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Cindy, I'll catch Barry. Cindy, go ahead.
Just to let you know, on the 5G information, I have been working with both AT&amp;T and Verizon on some installations that might be possible. They are not moving very fast, but they are, they are moving.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Barry? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, again, when we used to have budget meeting and stuff, like we'd have three people, four people, tonight we have 22. So yet, we had this exact same discussion at all those meetings, but there's only two people there. Now we got 22. It's, this document is posted on our website, and this is an opportunity for every citizen to, you know, say, you know what? Now I know it's all been out there. And I would recommend that any questions, line by line, or whatever any of our constituents have, contact one of your council members so they can bring that question to the next budget meeting.
Any other questions, comments? Mark?
Yeah. I've got some concerns over the new position that we're going to create. Kind of follow up on what Garnet said. It'd be helpful to have a job description established, Kirk.
I have one, I'll send them out to you, I have three of them.
A little more detail on exactly what duties you envision this person will do. I think the, I have a concern, I don't, I'm not, I think there's a need for additional help, okay? But I'm looking at long-term concerns with the possibility of adding additional personnel costs. Human resource costs are always your biggest ticket item when you're establishing a budget. We could be looking at lower taxable values with, as a result of COVID. And we have limitations in the future. We've discussed about potential, where are we going to get revenue five years down the stream, or down the line? I also think you're, if you're looking, and I don't know if you included in your $49,000 budget here, overhead costs for welfare and benefits, because that usually is up to, I'm thinking, Peter may know, it's probably 40% on top of what you are budgeting.
Yeah, this is, this is the position cost. You, the 40% on there, you typically add 40% to whatever you, for your, your benefits and things of that nature.
Employing taxes and benefits. Is that reflected somewhere else in the budget, or is that something?
Yes, no, yeah, it's, this, yeah, this is just the, and I didn't mean, I didn't put it in there to mislead anybody, but I didn't want to put a $70,000. Yeah, yeah. Is that, because if I put in there, if you put the, what people don't really realize is, you know, what the total cost of the employee is, is pretty expensive. But if you put that in there, sometimes it shocks people, and they think that that's what the person's bringing home in a paycheck, so.
But still, we need to know, we differentiate, you know, even if it's differentiated, it's covered somewhere else in the budget.
It is, yes.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not against it. I just would like to see a little bit more, to me, it's a big step forward.
It is.
You know, because you're looking, like you're looking for someone who's got maybe even some past experience. And we know that $40,000 isn't a big salary this day and age. But still, in the area of, of small-town government positions, I think it's a pretty attractive starting salary, especially if they're, you know. But anyways, I'm looking forward to getting that, that additional information so we can, you know, study it closer. I did ask you several weeks ago, or a month or so ago, what we can do to help you make your job better and more efficient and to make the city runs more efficient. And I think this is probably one of the things that is in, you have in mind. So thank you. I think it's a good, good document, a great document. I just would like a little more information on that personnel and those expenses.
I agree 100%. And typically, when you're looking at increasing a position, you wouldn't do it in four sentences. It'd be much bigger. And then we would have talked about it probably at some more preliminary budget meeting. So I do have some, a lot more information, I just didn't want to throw it all in the budget. So I'll get that to council so that you can see it. Now, the other thing to keep in mind too, and I have not been a proponent of increasing the size of government, any way, shape, or form, especially with staffing. But in this case, and you make a good point, Mark, that if it's, you know, five years down the road, things change, and all of a sudden tax values are lower, we don't have the revenue. That's, that goes into line with, with almost any operation. And if we got into some situation in the future where we don't have enough revenue and we don't do as much projects, that position might not be around anymore. And we did have that, when I first started, we had a part-time position that was kind of functioning as more of a receptionist. And when we did some reconfigurations at City Hall and moved the clerk and treasurer down to be the, to function kind of in that role, we did not have a need for that person anymore, and we eliminated that position. So that is part of life. If you get a job and your service is no longer needed, you may not have a job.
Hi, Mayor, may I make a comment?
Jane asked for it before, earlier, do you still want it, Jane?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is probably one of the best laid-out budgets I've seen since I've done it at City Hall. And I know Kirk's put a great deal of time and effort into it, and I think he's, he's really on the right path. And I just want him to know that I appreciate all his work. And, you know, it may need a few tweaks here and there, like Mark said, but I, I think this is a great budget. And I would really like to see that work done on Campbell Road, especially because it's a collaborative effort with Douglas. And that road is a mess, so I, I would like to see that project come to fruition.
Holly?
Just real quick, I have a comment for Kirk and for Pete. I loved what you guys did as a visual person to be able to read this budget so well and understand it. You guys knocked it out of the park. And I know it was a lot of work, and I really want to thank you. I enjoyed reading the budget, I can't believe it. So I think people in the community will really appreciate this format, and I just, I really thank you guys for doing that.
Okay, any other comments? I think we're on our way, Kirk. I would, I would add to the laurels here. I think you did an outstanding job, as you have in the past, presenting a budget. I think you're, it's very thoughtful, and it's very easy to understand at the top layer here, anyway. So great job, you and Pete, thank you. Then let's move along to the agenda review for 526 City Council next Tuesday.
Yes, let me, hold on one second here, I got a technical... Okay, let's see. Bear with me for just a second, I have to open up another file.
Sure.
While Kirk's opening up files, I really appreciate that dollar bill with just what the city gets and what everybody else gets. Because I, I truly think people do not understand that when you go to City Hall and pay your taxes, we get very little of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, I, I'll give you an agenda item review for Monday. We have, we have a grant request, and this is, this is a little bit, might be a little bit premature, but it's just the way things are situated. The Campbell Road project is currently, we can apply for, it's called Category B Funding through MDOT. And I've been working with Rich on this as well, with our city engineer. And, but we have to do this relatively quick in terms of be able to submit the grant applications. We applied for this, this grant last year for Campbell Road, but we didn't receive it. The engineer thinks this year, we are in a better position to receive this money. And we would each get $75,000 between the two cities to put towards this project. So it's not a ton, but it's still, it's $75,000. So I have that on Monday for council's consideration. And basically, if you approve the, the submittal of the grant, then you're essentially saying we want to go ahead and work on Campbell, get Campbell Road done if you get the grant money. So I know it's a little bit premature because you haven't adopted the budget, but unfortunately, there just isn't any way I can get around that. I know Rich spoke with his council about this, and they're all on board, they want to get that road fixed. So that's going to be on there, and we can discuss it a little bit further. There'll be a lot more information in the packet, and it'll make it a little bit more clear. There was a, we have a resolution of support that council member Peterson asked to have on the agenda at the last regular council meeting, she brought it up. So I took the comments that she had, and we put a resolution together, that'll be on there for council's consideration. We have a mayor's proclamation for Pride Month, which is next month. The city council did this last year. And it's, it's been requested to be back on the agenda to make that proclamation again. I did speak with the mayor, since this is a mayor's proclamation, and he did authorize me to stick that on there for your consideration. And lastly, we have the fire district budget approval. This is something that the city council is required to do annually, as well as the city of Douglas and the village, and the, I'm sorry, and Sagatuck Township, because all those three units are in the fire district. So each governmental unit has to give the thumbs up on the budget before the Fire District Board meets and approves it. So those are the three or four action items that you'll have for Monday.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, this Garnet.
Chris had her hand up first, I think, I'm sorry.
Just a quick note that also we're going to have Elizabeth Eskie's talk. And I'm sure it'll be fascinating because there'll be a lot of decisions that will be made by that time, and we'll get the inside scoop.
Okay. Garnet?
Yeah, along, along those lines. Jane and Chris, are you, are you all going to come with a proposal Tuesday regarding street closures, pop-ups, that kind of thing? Do your work that you've been, okay, wonderful. So I would like that to be on the agenda, please.
Do we anticipate there's going to be an action item? Or do you, so, okay, so what I'll do is I'll list it without any detail, without any information, so at least it's on the agenda so the public knows about it, and then at least it's on there and we'll have it. So I'll put that on there as well.
Perfect.
Jane?
And we'll try to get that, the results of the survey that was conducted. And thank you a ton, Gregory, I know you really worked hard on this. We'll try to get that out to council pretty rapidly, and we'll come up with our recommendations for Tuesday night.
Good, good, look forward to seeing it. All right, let's, where are we here? Also comments, or other items of discussion, pardon me. And hello, Abby.
I know.
Gary?
If, if we're going to have an action item in regards to the downtown, you know, the broad swath, which we're all excited about, we should have, you know, a motion or something crafted out of that so we're not winging it during the part of the business meeting. So I don't know how we get there, but I really hate going into an action item without, I always like to try to write them down first and have them ready to hand to the clerk. And even if it gets changed or amended, at least you have something to start with.
I, I think that's a good point. And Cindy, if you, or Kirk, the opportunity to review this and, and tell us what needs to be, you know, do we need to pass a new ordinance, or can we do it administratively, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Yes, any other items for discussion? Then let's go to council comments.
Public comment.
Thank you very much. We do have a period here for public comment on any topic. If you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself and ask to be recognized. Okay, hearing none, we'll go to council comments. Holly, start with you.
Just real briefly, I'm on a committee, we're all on committees, I guess, but this is a technology committee working with SCA and Rotary. We're very close to getting funding, and it's to provide sort of a triage for area businesses who need websites, digital payment, and social media. And we sent surveys to businesses, and we got a response of about 60 merchants that showed interest. So we're trying to get that going in the next maybe three weeks.
Very interesting. Garnet?
Yes, just really quickly, Lisa Meis asked that I share this with you. David Lorenz, who is in charge of Pure Michigan and works with the Travel Michigan Newsletter, has asked for permission from the Sagatuck Douglas Together Group to include that group's reopening protocols that they've been working on. So that will appear, it's coming out sometime today. So that's a huge, I think it's just kudos to the entire community and this group of volunteers that's been working so hard to get things in place for our business owners. The other thing I shared with everybody today, just given the failures of the dams up north and the resulting flooding, you know, I think the, the report that we got from, regarding roads and bridges is very timely and is worth our time and energy to maybe get a update from Fleece and Vanderbrink and, you know, the engineers as far as how our bridge, the Blue Star Bridge is, and, you know, how we're doing. Lastly, I had, I'll, I'll give a more thorough update on Tuesday, really, really good recycling committee meeting. It is an outstanding group of people. Barry's a part of that as well, it's been very good.
Okay, Barry?
Yeah, I don't think we need to get Fleece and Vanderbrink, all respect, Garnet. We just redid our bridge, and I, and I'm sure Kirk can give us an update of, you know, what we did. But help me out here, is it like five years ago, six years ago?
Well, Kirk, don't we have a, an inspection coming up?
Yeah, the bridge inspection is joint, done jointly with Douglas, and we signed that, that agreement with Fleece and Vanderbrink. John Moxey said he'll have the report to us in July, so the council will get, we'll get him in there and the council members get to their question, yeah, but it's, it's a good point. I mean, it's, that bridge is a pretty expensive piece of infrastructure, back with my billion-dollar analysis there. So we'll get the engineers in and get all the council updated pretty quick here.
Very good, thank you.
My recollection is, it was, and Kirk, you can help me out here, it was about a million-dollar project, of which we had a big grant for, but each, each community put in about $360,000. And the city of Sagatuck budgeted for that, our $360,000 over a number of years. So when it came to fix the bridge time, we had all the money set aside.
Correct, yep.
Okay, Chris?
Today, we had a wonderful parade with the seniors from high school through town and over through Douglas. And I know she's not going to say anything, but Jane Vander... That was her name. Jane Verplank was behind all of that. She got a lot of minions to help put up the balloons, but this was her idea, and it came through beautifully.
Yeah, I was one of her minions, and we had fun putting the balloons up. And Jane, I got to give you a lot of credit, that really looked nice. Had all the signs along the park there, where the parking was blocked on, I thought it was great.
Oh, well, thank you. And I'll send you pictures of the 400 balloons that were in my living room last night. We had a lot of fun blowing them up. We had Aaron Wilkinson help me blow up the balloons, and Steph and Ken Velocity came down and tied strings on them. It was kind of a group project, but I just thought it was nice to show the community that, you know, we're behind them, and we're behind those seniors, and we feel for them because they don't get to have a graduation. So it's kind of a full stop with no fun after a long career in high school. So, so we tried to dress up the town a little bit, and we'll go out tonight and cut it all down so that we don't have ugly strings hanging from things here and there, so.
Okay, good job.
Thanks.
Mark?
Yeah, just a comment on the capital improvement projects that Kirk listed. Something caught my attention, it's something I've been thinking about, where he put $50,000 in, and Mount Bald Head to take down the old radar building facility. I think we ought to re-figure, rethink that whole project myself. I'm thinking if we're going to go ahead and take down that, that building on top, I'm thinking if we're going to go ahead and take down that, that building on top, we might as well replace the deck and work our wet cells down. Because to get up to there, to take that building down, it's going to be a pretty monumental task physically. And then if you got to turn around and replace that deck in the next few years, you know, you might as well get it done while you're up there is what I'm getting at. That deck is pushing 40 plus years on the top of that facility. It's not in very good shape. So maybe we can do less below and put more on top, and then, you know, kind of rethink that. But that just got me thinking that we've been talking about that damn building for 25 years, you know, hoping that someone is going to save us, like the Fed. Kirk and I are on plenty of calls with the Air Force and the Army Corps of Engineers, trying to get them to take responsibility for tearing that down. And they both basically told us to go pound sand. And so anyways, we can talk about that when we talk about infrastructure. Got me to thinking. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Verplank, seconded by Johnson. Yes, all in favor, or this is a roll call, but excuse me.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, but can I get a quick clarification on something? I should have said it before, I mean, when I was talking. But if we have individual comments regarding the street closures and all this stuff, since we're going to have this on the agenda Tuesday, should we be sending our comments to Kirk, or should we send them to Chris and Jane?
Well, why don't we coordinate through Kirk, and he can, would that be okay?
Yes, just send it, just send it if you want to. I mean, if you want to funnel through me, I'll get it out to everybody. I check my email about every 10 seconds. So it should be all right.
I just want to make sure that, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, by the way, I proved it.
Leo? Yes. Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. Thank you very much, and have a great weekend, folks.
I do have to say I enjoyed Christine from Wix's very colorful language.